And you have. We just have to ensure that we have created the space for you to be able to determine whatever it is and to be prepared for that. And so I'm very excited for your gap year and the years after that. That's awesome. So, thank you for that. As I begin my report this evening, I'm excited to recognize one of our trustees, trustee Patterson. And I know over the last few board meetings, we have honored trustee Patterson on a number of occasions. And unfortunately, it's not going to be for Duke winning the national championship.
Please, please don't rub it in.
Oh, Dr. Whitehurst Payne.
It wasn't for you, I'd sneeze.
Okay. But I want to recognize trustee Patterson for his receiving the Princeton Prize in race relations. And I think this is an important recognition. He is one of three in California who is receiving $1,000 and an all-expense-paid trip to Princeton to participate in a symposium on race. And this is awarded to our students for their work in their school and their communities for undertaking sufficient roles in advancing racial equity. And so, congratulations trustee Patterson. You continue to represent us well and represent the UC community well and represent all of our students very well. Congratulations and you should be very proud. And additionally, as everyone knows and as we heard earlier, we do focus on health and wellness a great deal in the San Diego Unified School District, and this is a priority. And we often talk about students. This also includes our staff. And this helps strengthen our community and the health and safety of our communities. And so, this past April 4th, we brought back thousands of employees or brought them together here at the central office as we called "Spring into Wellness." And what an incredible event for hundreds of employees. So, I want to say thank you to Nursing and Wellness, specifically Kate McDevitt, our district wellness supervisor, as well as the employees of the Human Resources Division for their efforts, the employees of the Office of the Superintendent, and a very special thank you to Jessica Marrero, who without her, this would not have happened, and so many others. It would take our whole meeting if I thanked everyone by name. And so, I will say everyone who contributed and all of the partners, particularly the puppies. We had puppies here. And yes, yes, we had puppies here. So, thank you to the puppies. And our hope is that when we host events like this, that our employees get a chance to get motivated and get in the habit of really thinking about health. And I know Garfield High School, they just launched a month where I'm supposed to do a mile a day to get me moving. Andrew, you can join me. A mile a day, walking or running. And they're doing that at Garfield High School, which is great. And it's taking the first step to our wellness and our health. And we want to continue to do this for our employees. As we know, they're going to spend many, many years taking care of our children, and we want them to take care of our health. I'm also pleased to say that we have taken an important step in health and wellness as we have partnered with our friends at Pedal Ahead and taking part in a wellness event and reaching their goal. Pedal Ahead has reached their goal in partnership with us. And they have provided 54 e-bikes to our employees, to San Diego Unified employees. And they have reported that our employees have already ridden 635 miles on these bikes. That is another initiative that we're taking on to make sure that our employees have an opportunity to increase their health and their wellness and do it in partnership with our outside partners. And thank you, you know, to everyone who is making these events possible for our employees. I also want to celebrate an opportunity that I had with our chief staff, Dr. Roddy and Bruce Bivens, Area 1 Superintendent. We went out to Knox Elementary or Middle School and had a chance to hear about teacher collaboration and visit a mathematics classroom, along with visiting their restorative justice circle space. And it was phenomenal. I also got a chance to get out to Fletcher Elementary School and join with an organization, Art Mural Painting with the 5th graders. Now, I don't encourage anyone to go out in a suit and tie and try to paint with 5th graders. Paint was flying everywhere. Thank goodness they gave me an apron, but that doesn't cover everything. And so, I did get out of there without paint all over. But what a great job they're doing. And Art Mural came out, met with our students, asked them what they dream about for their school, and really thinking about more green spaces, the environment, and reading. And they take the themes, create a mural, and then they have the students come out and participate in painting. And so, great work out there at Fletcher and many of our schools. And lastly, an opportunity to get out to our TRACE program, Transitional Learning for many of our students. Amazing work they're doing out there around a guaranteed viable curriculum, creating learning domains for our students who are in transition, and also a real focus on advocacy and agency, as I spoke about earlier, community, independent learning, employment, education and training, and health and recreation. These are the domains that are being created at the TRACE school. And want to thank everyone for doing that. And I made one mistake. I said Art Mural. It was a mural program through Art Reach. Thank you for giving me for that, Art Reach. With that, it concludes my report, and I say, Ubuntu. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Let us move on now to the board reports. And we will start with our star here, trustee Zach Patterson.
Thank you. So, I had a really incredible few days. I was able to head out to Boston, first of all, and be sit in a great group of people at Tufts University as we're talking about civics curriculum for the nation. Give me one second. I promise I don't have COVID. Already tested negative multiple times. Thank you. We were able to go over what it looks like to create an equitable democracy and the role of public schools in being able to do that. And I know I'm really excited in being able to continue to work with us to try to find ways that we can get our 16- to 18-year-olds pre-registered to vote and then 18-plus registered to vote. But even more so than just that initial registration, what it looks like to more meaningfully engage students. We talk about agency, and agency is a foundation for democracy, right? When we want a more successful society, when we want people that are actively participating, that means that they believe in themselves at a very young age, and they believe that their school systems match the democratic process, right? If we have a, we have statistics in our district from just a few years ago where students, 70% of students report not feeling engaged in, or not feeling engaged in the processes that create their school system. Well, if that's the first initiation to government they have, what's going to encourage them to participate in the future? And we continue to work towards that. And I know I'm excited to continue work to accelerate that and find ways that we can really break through that statistic and find a way to perpetuate and allow students to create a culture around voting. The second piece, I was able to participate in a conference with the National Council on Mental Well-Being. And it really brought to the forefront a reminder of what mental health first aid means and the importance of formally understanding that when you have basic first aid training, you should also have a basic competency on how to handle a mental health crisis and how important it is that all of our educators know how to. And I'm excited to continue work and challenge all of us to see how we can do that to be stronger.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. Two minutes goes away fast when you're on the timer over here, all of us. Let's start to my left. Come around.
I'll be doing a joint presentation with Dr. Mike, but I do have a couple of things I wanted to say very quickly. First of all, congratulations trustee Zach Patterson on your recognition. I think it is definitely something that we are all proud for you. And I think this is exciting. Second, I do want to mention to all of the parents at Patrick Henry High School and the members of the community at Patrick Henry High School that I have read every single email. I am, I've listened to every single voicemail message. I'm working with the superintendent and the staff. We engage weekly to make sure that we're going to continue to provide quality rigorous education for all students at Patrick Henry High School and that we will not eliminate any rigorous accelerated classes. In fact, we're working on this currently and will be reporting out in a couple of weeks way forward. Also, I do want to say how exciting it was to see the Point Loma JROTC Color Guard here tonight so that we could all give the pledge of allegiance in person. And it's very exciting to be back in school where masks are optional now because of our COVID case rates have dropped so low. Thank you. And I do want to also just welcome any Ukrainian immigrant or children into our schools and into our hearts that they may be able to escape the horror of what's going on over there. And our school doors are open. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Barrera.
Our chairman, Mike, if you could.
Well, Michael, if you want to go forward.
Yeah, I'm ready. Thank you trustee Beiser for sharing this time with me. But before we show the video, I too want to thank the Point Loma Color Guard so that we could all do the pledge together. I want to thank our staff for making it possible for me to be with you tonight. So, technologically, I am on the big screen behind you. In reality, I am above you in the boardroom. But professionally, I am with you in the work that we're doing here tonight. So, as a board member Kevin Beiser mentioned, we are combining our time to lift up Hickman Elementary School's Leader in Me program, which as trustee Patterson mentioned, develops student agency. So, let's, please play the video.
Hickman Elementary is a small elementary school here in Mira Mesa, San Diego, California. We have 435 students. I love our school because we are super diverse. We have over 27 different languages spoken here. When I came here, I noticed that we have a lot of leaders, but everyone was working in their own cylinders.
I didn't feel a sense of community here when I first came. Everyone was kind of on their own little island, even within my grade level. Everyone was just doing their own thing.
This school was in a pretty big slump. It was not enough communication. It was maybe a feeling of insecurity almost, that people weren't feeling good about their teaching or what was going on.
We realized that we needed a common language. We needed something to pull us together. We started doing a book study with this amazing book called "The Leader in Me." What if we started working with unlocking the genius in each child? What does it mean to actually be a leader?
And so, once we started using it, the culture changed. I mean, it was so quick.
After "Leader in Me," I saw a definite transformation where students were more involved. They felt they had a voice. Teachers felt like they had a voice.
What I like about "Leader in Me" in school is that everybody's a leader.
Since "The School of Leader in Me," the kids are also in charge.
They let you be free and let you do a lot of things.
It's not just one child is going to be the great leader of the class. It's each child has unique genius that we need to unleash.
I feel like the seven habits helped me become a better person and helped me influence other people to be too.
I feel like the seven habits helped me in my life by tell, they helped me understand what I'm meant for.
You can be a leader too at the age that you're at. And also, you are also important.
I have triplets in kindergarten. And just seeing them become their own little leaders. They come home and they tell me stories about getting to be this class leader, a table leader.
"Leader in Me" takes you from leadership is for the few, but leadership is for all.
You lead by setting example for others to try and, and try to inspire people to be leaders as well.
I think what makes a good leader is someone that sets a good example and inspires others to be a leader.
They should probably not be the kind of leader that tells people what to do. And instead, they actually show them.
There's a freedom in learning leadership skills. And it truly builds the confidence of the students, but the staff too.
Each of our teachers went through the seven habits training. They learned that they need to walk the walk and truly be that leader. And then, how do they release that leadership to their students?
It's a constant reminder of what I need to do. And when I teach the students, I'm living what I'm teaching.
(Singing) Seven habits help me seek. There's a leader in me. There's a leader in me.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that with us.
Thank you.
Are you ready, Mr. Trustee Barrera?
I am. Thank you, President Whitehurst Payne. First of all, I want to thank President Whitehurst Payne and Superintendent Jackson for participating in the Las Panyanitas Celebration that the Cesar Chavez Service Clubs had at Hoover High School on the Friday right before spring break. That was both about honoring the work and legacy of Cesar Chavez, but also was a chance for the Chavezistas to talk about the work that they're doing today, the advocacy that work that they've been doing around promoting mental health, fighting for a sustainable climate, and the work that they're doing in their individual schools. And then the Chavezistas honored Ann Smith, who's an amazing member of our community who worked side-by-side with Cesar and the farmworkers to negotiate contracts in the early 70s and went on to become a lawyer and represented the coalition of city employees in overturning at the California Supreme Court the ban on employee pensions. They were able to restore pensions to public sector workers, and that was led by Ann Smith. So, that was a great event. And again, honored to be with the superintendent and President Whitehurst Payne and Vice President Bazo last night, our Sunday night at the Beyond Brilliance Awards that the VAPA Foundation brought the community together to support our arts and music programs in our schools. And we had amazing performances from SCPA. They previewed Tommy. They did the last number of Tommy. So, we're all looking forward to seeing the full production. And the Mira Mesa Marching Band, Scripps Ranch Dance Company, and then very proud to see the Barbershop Quartet or Barbershop Choir from San Diego High School that Kayla Rogers, you know, really built up, and they were beautiful. So, great event.
Certainly was. Thank you for reporting on that. Trustee, Vice President.
Yes. Good evening. I also, before I give my report, I did want to express my sorrow to Steve Lux's family, his colleagues, the music teacher that recently passed away from cancer. He was an amazing teacher, amazing parent. My daughter, actually, he was my violin, my daughter's violin teacher at Sandberg Elementary. And I saw, you know, firsthand how he, well, how wonderful he was with the students. And I was very sad to hear of his passing. So, I wanted to share that personal statement. And on a more positive note, I attended and was part of the ribbon cutting ceremony that was at the Stanley Pool in University City.
Yes.
Or Zach, trustee Patterson's high school. And it's also not just a pool, but a whole aquatic center. This project has been over 10 years in the making, and there was a lot of people that made this possible. I mean, it wouldn't have happened if it weren't for a lot of pushing, one of those being my predecessor, Dr. John Lee Evans. He, for at least the last 10 years, has been pushing for this project. Lot of people in the UC community. So, I just wanted to thank him. Also, Lee Dolgoroff, yep, he's here, Facilities and Construction Supervisor for the district, has been always wonderful to work with. But he was there and has been behind the scenes trying to make this happen for many years as well. The also, they, in addition to the pool, they have a walking and running path. They have an outdoor pavilion. So, it's not only just for the school, but also for the greater community. And this was a joint use project with the city of San Diego. So, and I also, when I was at the event, was talking to the gentleman from Parks and Rec, Ann Lee, about how we need to move forward with pools in more of our schools because there's a lot of our students that don't know how to swim. And so, more and more of these types of programs, I think, are going to be really important. We live in a coastal city next to the ocean. And we, you know, our students need to know how to swim. So, I think this is a good start. And we're going to be moving forward with pools in other parts of the city. So, thank you. That's my report for tonight.
And thank you for that about the pools because I saw that Jackie Robinson Wise Pool is opening soon for the Lincoln High students. So, that's upcoming in not a minute too soon. We need that. I personally just want to take a moment to ditto what our trustee Barrera said over here and what trustee, what all of them have said, all good stuff. But I also just want to report on the e-vehicles program that we received $9.6 million, $9.6 million grant. And we have some buses, electric buses, coming to town for us, for our students. And they're starting at Lincoln High School in that community, that cluster. Because they've noted over the years that the schools that are, tend to not be as high SES, socio-economically endowed, more children have asthma and other health issues because they have to breathe these fumes. So, the grant was written with Lincoln High School and schools like that in mind, and we get the first buses. Very proud of that. I went and got a hat and a water bottle and other paraphernalia. And I thought, if one student will write me an email and tell me why they think that we should have electrical vehicles and whatnot, I'll send it out to them. Melissa, I hope you're listening. So, we'll send it out to that student who would like to have all of this paraphernalia. Okay? Thank you for that. And I just want to report on Friday, March 15th, at 3:30, I've gotten an email that Lincoln High School is having a peace march. We want to stop all the violence and have a peace march. So, want more information, go on their website or just contact my office and me. And I plan to be there to march with them so that we can have more peace in the city. And with that, thank you all for your reports. And let us move on now to item E1, which is?
This is the second reading of our A- through G Completion Improvement Grant. And we are asking the board to approve this. Reminder, we've seen a presentation. We had a first reading. This is $12 million, just over $12 million to extend learning for our students and also have credit recovery and acceleration, as well as improve our dashboard for reporting out and support for our teachers and professional learning. And so, this is the second read from, of the board for this presentation. We ask the board to approve.
Thank you.
I'll move item E1.
Thank you. A second on that?
Second.
Okay. We have Kevin Beiser, trustee, and Richard Barrera to make the motion. And second, we have no speakers. And does anybody want to discuss? Otherwise, I get to hear from Dr. First, the student trustee. What is your vote?
Aye.
Aye. And now, I get to hear from Dr. Mike upstairs. I don't think you have.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And everybody else, please press your buttons. And that passes 5-0 with a student vote concurring with the rest of us. So, thank you for that. Look forward to that. And we move on to item E2.
Thank you, President. Dr. Whitehurst Payne, as you know, we want to provide updates on the implementation of our Local Control Accountability Plan for the 21-22 school year. And tonight's update will focus on LCAP Goal 6, where we are designing well orchestrated district-wide support services with an emphasis on increasing communication with students, staff, and families. And presenting this evening, Chief Public Information Officer Andrew Sharp, Maureen McGee, our Director of Communications, and Sam Renagi, Facilities Communications Supervisor. So, I'm going to turn it over to them to begin. Thank you.
Sorry. Is that working? Perfect. Thank you very much. President, Dr. Whitehurst Payne, Vice President Bazo, trustees, superintendent, esteemed colleagues, thank you very much for letting us share tonight. In keeping with the protocols of the board, this is, as you see, referred to as LCAP Goal 6 because part of what we do in communications is translate the jargon. I will say that really, we want to present on our main commitment to the city, which is, as we like to say, our schools make San Diego a better place to live. And that's really our fundamental commitment to the city. We, in communications, do that mostly through transparency and by holding ourselves accountable to the highest standards so people know what to expect from a great education at San Diego Unified. That enables them to then hold us accountable to delivering that great education. And so, we like to say that you should be able to count on San Diego Unified to receive five particular things. We talk about advanced academics. We talk about advanced technology. Talk about arts and music. We, and we talk about civics. And we talk about athletics. And those are our five big commitments that we like to highlight all the time because they really go to how we make the city a better place by providing students with those opportunities. And then in terms of accountability, obviously, I couldn't, I couldn't share all the, all the commitments we have to transparency and equity and everything. If we didn't have a great team. And in terms of communications, that's certainly the case. And I'd like to introduce my colleague, our Communications Director, Maureen McGee.
Thank you, Andrew. And thank you to the board and Superintendent Jackson. Okay. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you to the board and to Superintendent Jackson. Yes, next slide, please. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity to have this conversation about the goals we have set with the community. It's important to be clear that tonight's presentation serves as an LCAP update. But these goals are broader than what appear in the LCAP. Goal 6, well orchestrated district-wide supports, services, and communication. These goals live throughout the LCAP and throughout district documents. We have pulled them all together in one place to hold ourselves accountable to each of them. As you can see, we have big goals. And all of them are rooted in excellence and equity because that's what we all stand for. Thank you. We all know that good, effective communication is crucial to the entire district and its mission. If a parent feels disconnected to what's happening with their student's education, it's about communication. If a teacher feels uninformed about district initiatives, it's about communication. And if a student feels like they have a lack of voice in their education, it's about communication. When we communicate well, parents and staff, the community, families, are able to engage in honest dialogue. And that's when everyone wins. Next slide, please. Okay. Again, you can see we have big goals, but setting goals is not enough. As our board president likes to tell us, "Show me the numbers." So, we have connected our goals to some numbers. To be effective communicators during this presentation, we will refrain from narrating the slides, but I encourage you all to please look at them. As I run through some of the numbers, I would like to start by highlighting that our weekly Butter SD eBlast newsletter that we started that our weekly Better SD eBlast newsletter, that we started a couple of years before the pandemic, now has grown to 130,000 subscribers. That's about 10% up from last year. This year's eBlast open rate climbs from about 20 to 28% to peaks of about 50%, which is phenomenal. It demonstrates that our families and employees continue to seek out information from our schools. We also seek out feedback from our audience about how to improve the eBlast, and we use that feedback to refine and to improve. As you probably recall, we communicated on all platforms about COVID, about Level Up summer program, and with Level Up, more than 20,000 of our students were able to participate in engaging enrichment programs.
Yeah.
Sure, you got it. Thank you.
You got to lean into the line.
Well, do. Yes, you got it. Our team has also produced a record number of engaging videos, which Sam Renaji, Communications Facility Manager, will talk about, our supervisor, will talk about later in the presentation. Next slide. We are, we at the Communications Department are constantly working with our families. We're working with students in a way, they tell us they want information, and our numbers reflect that. For example, we have worked to reformat our web content to optimize mobile viewing. This past year, about 50% of our website visitors were, came in through a mobile device, and that's an increase of about 10% the prior year. Again, we're trying to meet our families and students and staff where they are. And we're doing more than ever to reach out to students. I'd like to give a shout out to trustee Patterson, who is always pushing us to do more on Instagram. We're receiving a gain in followers, and we hope to see even more. Trustee Patterson, by the way, has been instrumental in a lot of our efforts to improve student outreach and to amplify student voice. We are directly emailing high school students now to send them information that is uniquely relevant to them. In fact, our high school seniors should be getting an email later this month about a job fair through CCTE. The communications team also has put together a job aid for all employees of the district to use when they want to appropriately email our students. What's more, student voices are, were a key part of the superintendent search, the school names committee, and they are featured prominently in our videos. Again, reaching parents and students where they are is so crucial, and we have learned some valuable lessons about that this year during our work with the superintendent search committee, the names committee, and amid the pandemic. Communic-
Can I just cycle this slide?
Next slide, please. Thank you. Communicating in the right language, we know, is incredibly important. Not only does it give families immediate access to information, but it allows the district to build stronger relationships throughout the community. With our community partners, we have gone door to door, knocking on doors, offering translated life-saving information about COVID, making 40,000 contacts in the community. I'd like to thank our partners, Alliance San Diego, the Chicano Federation, and Say San Diego for their work. And I'd like to really thank Dr. Whitehurst Payne and trustee Barrera for helping to foster those important relationships in the community. That work was successful because we eliminated language barriers. Our Power School System limits languages that we can record, so we have come up with some workarounds. We list links to translated materials at the top of our communications whenever possible. Our team maintains and constantly updates a catalog of sample family letters for our principals. We are translating those letters now into 11 languages, up from four. The goal is individualized service, so we'll be doing more to record parents' language preferences going forward. In the spirit of meeting our family needs, I would also like to thank our Special Education Department for the work they gave parents one-on-one service during Level Up last summer and coming up again this summer. Next slide, please. So we eliminated red tape to let principals communicate more easily and more directly with their families, so they no longer need to go through the bureaucracy to perform basic functions in school messenger. The Communications Department will continue to solicit feedback and expand our access points to information. We know our families come in all shapes and sizes. We listened to our parents, to family engagement, and PTA, who told us that families need to expand the number of people who can receive basic information from their schools in the district, so they can now designate additional people to receive communications, accommodating more than just one parent, grandparents, partners, aunts, uncles, other members of our family units. Our families have changed, and we need to meet them to reflect that. Next slide, please. Nothing symbolizes our commitment to better reaching students, families, and our neighbors more than the facilities communication work that we do. And it has become a content-producing machine, digital content, videos, mailers, so much more. Communications, facilities, Communication Supervisor, Sam Renaji.
Can we please go to the next slide? Thank you. Equity lives in our commitment to build world-class schools in every neighborhood, and accountability comes from transparency and accessibility to information. Jamie and I, Jamie Reese, my colleague and I, started making virtual tour videos to meet ICOC requirements during the pandemic, who could no longer conduct project tours in person. Throughout the pandemic, the types of increase and interest we were receiving showed us students, families, and staff were still looking for good news out there. They were looking for some hope. We started sharing the ICOC videos across multiple platforms, and we expanded on their style. We even started doing virtual groundbreakings, topping out ceremonies, and ribbon cuttings. These videos have become so incredibly popular that they are now a permanent feature of our facilities communications work. I want to give a big shout out to my colleague, Jamie Reese, for the excellent contacts she's been producing. We are reaching more people through our facilities communications than ever before. And it's not just facilities. It's the entire communication team that is producing excellent, engaging content that amplify the district's values and commitments, like the video welcoming Afghan refugees to San Diego Unified. And thank you to Dr. Mike for connecting us with Sister Cities, who are featured in that video. Next slide, please. And we've completely changed the way how we share construction news. We used to send essentially doom and gloom letters out to neighborhoods. They were frequently thrown out without being read. They were being bounced back to the ed center, and some neighbors used to tell us, we're sending them bills. Now, they look like that. And feedback has been overwhelmingly positive, as families come to rely on communications products for important updates about the district and their neighborhood schools. People now call in to express excitement about the renovations that we're providing at their local school. And those that are not too happy with all the construction are no longer left in despair. They know exactly who and how to reach us if any issue arises at sdusdfacilitiesinfo@sandy.net. Transparency is key to accountability, so we continue to expand on our efforts to help people see the world-class facilities we're producing. Our project public portal is providing project updates in real time. The ICOC webpage has a library of quarterly, annual, and all audit reports. We regularly design and publish program and project-specific fact sheets with detailed project descriptions and status updates. We convert our construction postcards into an email, use school messenger to share with families and staff, and an ever-growing list of facilities partners, and thanks to trustee Patterson, soon-to-be students as well. We even support our colleagues at the city by providing translation and interpretation services at some city-community meetings. And that's thanks really to President Whitehurst Payne, who attends almost all of the meetings in her district and recognized that we should support our families at the city meetings where joint use fields are discussed. We also organize more tours than ever before. Just recently, trustee Barrera guided the San Diego Architectural Foundation through Wilson Middle School at the George Walker Smith Educational Campus during the first-ever open house event at one of our schools. And of course, our famous groundbreakings, topping outs, and ribbon cuttings. In addition to the videos, we now livestream each event, including our most recent. So thank you to trustee Bozzo for welcoming us to the Stanley Joint Use Pool, Joint Use Pool Ground Opening. Next slide, please. As we continue to improve our engagement with students, families, and staff, our commitments go beyond the LCAP goals. Following a period of tumultuous national politics and movements for justice, which were often led by students, including our own, the district put out a call to action to better serve students who had historically been underserved, and that includes Black youth, special education students, and the LGBTQIA+ community. We are now proudly supporting the diverse identities of our students and staff, amplifying our commitments to equity and social justice with action. We now host several annual flag-raising ceremonies, one during Black History Month, another on Pride Month, and another on Juneteenth. These flags are then displayed at the ed center throughout the year. Thank you to trustee Beiser for always encouraging us to not be afraid of proudly standing up for our diverse student body. And we continue to build partnerships that help tangibly improve the quality of lives of San Diegans, encouraging economic development by working with organizations like Young Black and in Business, the People's Association for Justice Advocates, the Black Contractors Association, and the San Diego Building and Construction Trades Council. Thank you to President Whitehurst Payne again for always supporting this work and prioritizing these critical relationships. Next slide, please. We are also engaging in true shared governance with our communities. Just look at the extensive superintendent search process, a collaborative effort between communications, the board office, and HR, that led to the selection of a homegrown leader. We've also expanded and revamped the school names committee, working towards a more inclusive district, ensuring that school names do not negatively impact students and instead become a source of pride, like the first-ever community-driven process to name our newest school, Niipawee Elementary, honoring Indigenous communities. We host regular site master planning and design task force and joint use field community input sessions, over 507 so far in the life of the bond program. We also facilitated the advisory committee and communications subcommittee to increase engagement with underrepresented groups. We have continued to improve, and I'm excited to welcome back our communications director, Maureen McGee, to talk more about it.
Thank you, Samer. That's amazing. Next slide, please. So we have showed you some of what communications does to support our schools and families, and we want to do more in a way that is strategic and helps the district accomplish its mission. One of the ways we hold ourselves accountable to the media and to the consumers of the media is by opening up access. We are preparing to launch a new series of ed talks. These are our forums that are designed to promote open and robust conversations about public education. These are casual forums that allow members of the media to talk with decision-makers, educators, and they help us build better relationships. I would like to thank every single member of this board for participating in ed talks over the past couple of years. Our most recent one was on Zoom during, during the pandemic. I would also like to give a shout out to Terry Williams, the Executive Director of the San Diego Press Club, and that entire organization for collaborating with us and for being our partners for ed talks. Before I hand this presentation back to Andrew Sharp, I would like to say that our whole communications team is, is committed to this work. I cannot say enough about this team of dedicated communications professionals. Every single one of them brings a unique skillset to the table and to our collective. Dan Howe, who does so much with our eBlast and overseeing the work of our website with our new webmaster, and Marisa Baruman with the superintendent search and our internal communications, Tara McNamara, who has been doing work on COVID communications. I could go down the list and highlight all of the incredible work this team does, day in, day out. They care so much about everything they do, and they care about representing you all so well. No one, I should say, has championed the work in communications more than Andrew Sharp, and so we all appreciate that, and I'd like to hand it back to Andrew to help close this out.
That's very kind. Thank you. I guess, I would just like to return once again to our, our theme of accountability, because really, that's the, that's the purpose of communication, so that people understand our commitments, your commitments to the city, so that we're able to help you inform them of those commitments, and that they can help us keep them by working together with us collaboratively. And so that's something that we're very proud of, and I guess, I'm always struck by the modesty of our team, but it's important to remember that they've represented us well nationally across the state. Maureen and her team just won the award for excellence in communications by a school organization for our Better SD eBlast. And she mentioned Dan, who does our social media as well, and so we also just wanted to work for excellence in communication to help parents do, make more informed choices when they're selecting schools. So it's been a goal from this board for a long time to try to step it up with our website, and we feel like we've made a lot of progress in terms of parents being able to think about what matters most to them and select schools based on those criteria. So we're grateful for that opportunity, and thank you for having us here this evening.
Thank you. And we don't have any speakers, but I'm sure the board members would love to say something. I just want to say thank you all to start with. So who's at first? Dr. Mike, you look like you're ready.
Well, I definitely want to thank our public information team for the outstanding work that they've done. I know when I first came on the board, the primary issues were transparency and accountability, and knew that the solution would be in better communications, both inwardly to staff as well as outwardly to the community. I thank Andrew Sharp and the team, and getting Maureen and on, on board. So we've got, we've got a terrific team here. Thank you, Sammy, as well. I know a lot of people there need to be acknowledged. But for one person here and on the board, seeing it from the inside and receiving it on the outside, you've done an outstanding job, and thank you.
Thank you. Yes, trustee Patterson.
Yeah, well, I'm super excited to see what we've done and what we're working towards. I think it's a great vision. One of the things, I mean, my whole purpose up here is centering us around students and thinking about how can we do a better job at reaching students directly? What are the platforms we're not using, right? So I look at this presentation, I think Instagram, we're doing great, that's awesome. Now we want to think about who's, who's actually following the Instagram account, right? So if we have ASBs that students are following the Instagram account of them, how do we get those students to actually follow the district account, and what's the information that's very relevant to them in order to make that happen? One of the other things I was thinking, we should really look into having a student intern in the communications office, getting someone out there that's receiving compensation, that's able to meaningfully contribute. And it definitely would not be me, because I have no skills in that realm. I don't actually say that sarcastically. But we, I mean, we have major influencers in this district. We have very, very relevant students that have thousands of followers, that know how to connect with students, and for us to not tap into that pool is just a waste. I mean, we really could revolutionize communication, but said light nicely, it's, it's not going to happen with so many X amount of years age gap. See what I did there? Said X amount of years.
Dispromised, yeah.
So I think that if, if we look to move in that direction and really get someone in, and a student, I think we could really transform this. And then I'll also bring up what we brought up a few weeks ago. Let's talk about an app. Let's see where we can go. And I'm excited to hear from the superintendent, whenever he gets to it, on the app that we're looking to, I'll look into, and to hear a report back on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice zingers here. Nice zingers.
We're all zingers, just in different places.
I said zingers, you know, like seniors say that.
I heard both of those. I heard a both. Francis is making notes, I'm sure.
Yes, I wanted to follow up on what trustee Patterson mentioned about an app being available to, so that also there could be one for parents and for students, because I think, going back to the, you know, more student-centered outcomes, it would be great to, to have that available, and then, you know, based on what school they go to, they, you could even have it filtered down for students, or I'm sorry, parents and students, to be go, to be able to have a specific page on the app where they get information. But I also wanted to say thank you so much. I know you guys do fantastic work, and I, and, you know, very much appreciated. And also, I think it's so hard to keep up, you know, I mean, I, I mean, I was, I think most of us up here were born, you know, when computers weren't really, weren't really a thing. And so now, I think we've had to catch up a lot, and it, you know, the technology just moves so fast. And I think you've done a fantastic job in keeping up with that. But also with regard to social media, I know a lot of parents get concerned, you know, when you have kids in high school, even middle school, elementary school, and social media can be kind of a scary thing, but instead of ignoring, pushing it away, I think a lot of parents have the sense that, oh, no, we need to just block it. But my sense was always, we, it's, it's here, like, it's not going anywhere. So yes, we need to be in control of that, but we also can use it to our advantage, you know, and- but we also can use it to our advantage, you know, in some cases, and make it a positive thing. But it's, you know, that difficult balance of using the social media. But I think it's important to have those outlets because that's where we're going to meet, really reach our students. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Barrera.
Yeah, so first of all, I just want to obviously thank Andrew and Maureen and Samer and the whole department. It's really kind of overwhelming to see the scale of the work that your department is doing. And particularly in the last couple of years, when the need, you know, for parents, students, and the general community to have clear and direct communication from us has just never been more important. I mean, it's been really, you know, life-changing decisions that people have had to make. And they can only do that with the right information. And so whether it's been COVID, whether it's been our anti-racism work, which has influenced, you know, the Names Committee and other issues. I mean, this has been a big couple of years where people have needed us to step up. And you've done that. And while you've done that, you've built an infrastructure that allows us to do some things going forward that we really have never been able to achieve. And I think in particular, so everything about, you know, what Trustee Patterson was talking about in listening directly from students and trying to develop, you know, communication tools that work for students. I think about the door-to-door work, you know, that we've been doing, you know, to be able to reach out to our communities, to parents in different languages, in a setting that oftentimes we think we're communicating with people because we're putting information out. But if we're not listening back in real conversations, then we don't, you know, actually know that what we're trying to communicate is coming across. And then we miss the opportunity to listen, you know, to our families. So that infrastructure of door-to-door communication, which was necessitated, you know, this year by COVID, is the key to expanding enrollment in preschool and universal transitional kindergarten. It's the key to telling the story of our neighborhood schools so that families feel confident that they can make a choice about sending their students to neighborhood schools because they're actually listening to what's happening, and we're listening to them. And so many other issues which have been, you know, really difficult for us to get to. You're building that infrastructure in the most challenging time to not only help us through this time, but to make us better going forward. So very much, you know, appreciate your leadership. It's a long time coming. Challenges, as Andrew talked about, that, you know, we've been trying to get to at this, you know, district for over a decade. You're making it happen. So just can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Whitehurst Payne. I just want to say thank you. For years, communication wasn't something that San Diego Unified, we didn't do very well. And then this team came together, and it is night and day. And you know that, I know that, they know that. And a lot of people and parents and teachers know that. You guys have done a phenomenal job. I'm not surprised at the number of awards that your department has received for your work. I mean, hashtag Better SD. That is phenomenal. You know, being recognized by the Conservative San Diego Taxpayers Association year after year after year as being one of the highest-rated school districts for a transparent bond program. That is something that we all can be very proud of. And thank you to everybody involved in that effort. The 2022 California School Public Relations Association Award of Excellence, that is phenomenal. We have a fiduciary responsibility, and communicating that is important. I think you said it the best, is that accountability comes with transparency and easy access to information. And I am personally grateful for the Discover School Choice website. Every year, parents would want to figure out, well, choicing into different schools because parents need to have that freedom and flexibility to have their child go to a school where they feel that would be the best fit for their child. And that is something that is now easier and more accessible to parents all over San Diego. I just want to say thank you very much for a job very, very well done. And I'm very excited about what's yet to come. Thank you.
Thank you all. I personally want to say that I've watched this department transform itself because in the beginning, we were just complaints, complaints, complaints. And come to think about it, I haven't heard any recently. But I just want to say this as an example. On the Superintendent Search from the beginning, you ask Chris right now, Chris Rising, and he'll tell you, oh, yes, that Communications Department, he went from complaining to getting things done, and now he's a supporter. So I say thank you to that. Thank you for moving forward and helping us to move from four languages to 11 languages. That's very positive. We kept getting complaints. I'll call Dan out. You all remember Dan, I called him out. Moved to 11 languages, and that's a positive, and I do appreciate that. On the app, why don't we just have students to compete to do some apps? We could find, can we find some money to give them a little competition here, you know? I'm sorry, your superintendent.
Let's do it tonight.
Yes, yes. But whatever app it is, I'm sure they can figure it out and would love to do it. Dr. Randy Ward's son, is his name James?
James.
James has worked on something. Let's unloose them and let them go forward, and they'll help us to figure out whatever it is. And I think your son could probably help us too, Andrew. Sam can help us, Sammy. And then one thing that I would like to really applaud the Communication Department on, and that is when we get calls from the Elementary Institute or this organization, and they say, I can't get through, principals are too busy, the messages are bogged down. Your department has found a way to make the community folk happy because you found a way to get right into the parents and the messages out. They get their slots filled to attend the Elementary Institute on a scholarship or whatever it is because they know about it. And they don't have to go through four or five layers to get there. You're just going directly in with an announcement, a phone call, or whatever, quick announcement. And it's working. So that's the kind of thing that I think it's really exciting, and what you all are doing. Yes, Samer, I try to make all of my meetings unless I'm out of town or something. And we do try to meet our community's needs in that sense. And I just want to say thank you on behalf of the board for your embracing all that we are trying to do to help our students and our families, to make this community a better place. Thank you. And with that, we will move on to our consent, our board consent.
I'll move item F123.
Thank you. And a second on that. Thank you. The Bs over here have it today. Okay, no requests for public testimony. And we'll begin with our student board.
I vote aye.
Aye. Dr. Mike?
Aye.
Aye. And everybody else, please press your button. So that gives us 5-0 passes, and we have the student board member concurring with us. Thank you. That moves us on to item G. We have none, none for H, and we're at the Superintendent's Consent Agenda. So a motion on that, please.
So moved.
Is this a B and B again? Beiser and I'm waving Barrera. Okay, thank you, a little coercion here. Okay, there are no comments on that either. We'll begin with Trustee Patterson.
No suspension and expulsions tonight? Just checking if there's suspension.
I vote aye with abstentions on I-10 and 11.
Thank you. And the rest of you, please press your button. Oh, Dr. Mike?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And everybody else? That passes 5-0 with a student concurring except on items I-10 and 11. Thank you. And that moves us on to our administrative assignments. D2 with the Superintendent.
Thank you very much, President Dr. Whitehurst Payne. This evening, during closed session, the board did approve and appoint a new Chief of Staff, Dr. Enrique Raucho. And they also approved in closed session the Deputy Superintendent that we will be bringing forward in the organization, Dr. Fabiola Bagula. This evening, I will be appointing and moving forward Principal of McKinley Elementary School, and welcome Patricia Arons, who will be joining us from Anchorage, Alaska. Welcome. And lastly, I will be moving forward Associate Principal at Logan Memorial Education Complex, Romeo Mabamta. Congratulations to Logan Memorial, and I think this is a great addition. And I look forward to the work of the Associate Principal at Logan Memorial Education Complex. Thank you.
Thank you. And that moves us to our public agenda, public testimonies. I believe we have three in-person and three on Zoom. Let's get the in-person folks first. Mel Brewer, Michael Goldwater, and Michael Goldwater on two different issues, I believe. So you each have three minutes. Please come forward in that order. Mel Brewer? Is Mel Brewer present? Vaccines mandate? Okay, not here. Michael Goldwater.
No.
Can you hear me now? Yes, you can. Michael Water, School Mount Everest Academy. Most of you know me. Honesty, integrity, and honor. A lot of rhetoric tonight. I didn't hear any of those words. Now I'll get to what I'm going to talk to them about. I applied for the position investigator. After nearly six months, I was denied. Dr. Whitehurst Payne, you and I worked side by side in race human relations years ago in investigations. I have over 400 investigations over 25 years. I'm collegiately trained. And I was told today, I believe it was today or yesterday, I was not qualified. There's not a single candidate within Human Resources on paper that is more qualified than I am. Honor, integrity, honesty is greatly missing from Human Resources. Dr. Jackson, you were Human Resources Chief at one time. You know that department. The department is corrupt. I would like to ask you? No, I'm demanding an investigation of what's going on, and I want results. I am qualified. There are two positions open. I am qualified. I was denied. Could be many reasons. Maybe my 12 years in all with the union, maybe the contract language people still don't like, that it's still in the contract. I don't know. But I am qualified. Honesty, integrity. And people say, well, you don't know the law? I do know the law. I study the law. I know the law. I was not given an even break. You have a corrupt Human Resources. Please do something about it. That's my first subject. You want to start the timer again? Ready? My second subject. San Diego Unified has said many times, and it's all over the United States, let alone in the state of California, we have a teacher shortage. In this particular school district, we don't have a teacher shortage. We have a shortage of individuals looking and seeing what's right in front of them. You have blinders on your eyes. We have between 250 and 300 classified employees in all areas that have college degrees, who would like to teach. Here's the problem. Once you're a classified employee and you've gone up the steps, and the teacher's pay is so low, I believe about $47,000 a year, nobody in the right frame of mind would go ahead and take a $10,000, $15,000, $20,000 pay cut to use their college degree. How to resolve it? You have it right here. Right over the fence, Bernie Elementary, you have a gentleman who has a Bachelor of Science in Mechanical Engineering, physics, calculus, and chemistry. He can teach. He's not going to take food away from his stable of his family. He's got two children and a wife. How do you resolve it? Reciprocity. One, for how many years you've been with the district? Let's say every five years. Give that person a step raise from the teacher's salary. Two, well, I do know we have a program for par educators, but only for par educators. Why not custodians? Why not food service? I know a young lady in food service got her BA, her master's and PhD in English literature, Shakespearean English literature. I think after 37 years as a classified employee bus driver, she retired. Five times she applied, five times she was denied. Why? Because she was a classified employee. Some of the best military officers in the United States military were former enlisted. The military doesn't discriminate against being former enlisted. Why does this board, and you, Dr. Lamont, why do you discriminate within your Human Resources Department? Do something about it. You have the resources. Open up your eyes. You have the resources right here in San Diego Unified to do something about it.
Thank you. We have three folks on Zoom via Zoom. Bee Ray, Jacob Ricketts, and Luann Buck. And these are on Zoom. Unmute yourself, you see any of them?
Hello? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay. Hi, I was calling about Agenda Item I-15 and 16.
Okay.
Okay. Hi, I was calling because it's a growing concern for me to see all of the schools start to look like prisons with these fencing that is going up around the schools. What I'm finding is that you're spending millions of dollars on fencing a school and making the kids feel like it's more about control than it is about education. That money could be easily used for making sure we have smaller classrooms, better, you know, teachers' salary, and that we could... I'm sorry, there was an interruption. And that we can have more access. My concern actually is that the parents do not have access to the schools. What they're doing is they're going to have just these one entrances for the students to enter. And that, to me, is just going to, again, slow down school and as far as bringing in students, the time that it'll take for that and being able to be in the classroom. But my big issue is for the parents. I want the parents to know that you're getting more and more not having access to enter the school and to get your children out. And this is just, it's already been an issue as far as even like we said with Communications, I've had to talk to a bot, et cetera. Also, when it comes to fencing and enclosing a school, you give the image to the student that they, you're not giving them to be empowered. You're giving them this idea of that they are less than and that they do not have the capability. We need to look at this, the way we're imprisoning students, and also the surveillance. I mean, is this about control or is this about education? We are spending money on things that have to do nothing with education, but just about control. I want the parents to know that, to look into that. And if you want to know more about it, go to teachrights@yahoo.com. Thank you.
Thank you. We have any of the other two, Jacob Ricketts or Luann Buck? Okay, let's do Jacob first.
Hello? Hello, my name is Jacob, and I am a junior from Marimeza High School. One thing I've noticed in my school and others' high schools was that not many people were involved in district advocacy besides a friend of mine on the Student Advisory Board. We need to find more leadership opportunities for our students, especially in middle and high school. I remember in elementary school, we had a Leader in Me program, which encouraged... high school. I remember in elementary school, we had a leader in me program which encouraged our students to become leaders. However, although it was amazing, one problem I've noticed is that there doesn't seem to be enough district-wide base or enthusiasm-driven programs for branching out from there. In middle school, as far as I know, it was either the site governance team or school site council for advocacy. Although, obviously, students show leadership in local clubs such as the Key Club, NHS, or other clubs at school. There seems to be a drought in opportunity in students that want to participate in district issues. I remember running polls at my school, and some students at Scripps Ranch, whether they know they're a locally elected official, such as their amazing representatives, such as Jacquet Patterson or Sabrina Basio, where although there were a few that knew them, many of them had not heard of them. I personally am part of the Student Equity Ambassadors because I was inspired by people like them. But San Diego Unified has got to incorporate in its curriculum and in schools a ways to increase students' participation in district and local politics, and we have to eliminate hoops and bounds and get mass participation of students, besides just these small groups of students, and emphasize making a difference in their education. We thought to either massively expand and advertise existing institutions, such as the Student Equity Ambassadors and the SWEAR Committee, to have a congress of students in middle and high school, maybe at least 50 volunteers from each school, that can all meet together and stand up for themselves, and others in order to help our district and let the so many unheard voices of students in our district be heard to inspire the next generation of leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you move that forward? And then Luann Buck?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you. You all unanimously voted for this vaccine mandate. Are you okay with killing or seriously injuring perfectly healthy children for a virus that does not kill healthy children? The CDC recently admitted that they do not have data of healthy children lying of COVID. Will you be paying for the damage of injuries and deaths since vaccine manufacturers have immunity from lawsuits? Let me just take a few excerpts from Bayer's, which under reports by 90 to 99% and is months behind reporting. Male, age 15, heart failure, died one day after vaccination. Female, age 16, cardiac arrest, six days after vaccination. Male, age 12, myocarditis, died one day after vaccination. Female, age 5, found pulseless and not breathing, died one day after vaccination. Female, age 7, found unresponsive in the bed, died 11 days after vaccination. Male, age 8, cardio respiratory arrest, died eight days after the vaccination. These are only a few of the deaths. There are 101 children under the age of 18, with only 1 to 10% of actual deaths are captured on the CDC database. This is the only database to collect vaccine adverse events. As a mother of a vaccine-injured child, I know that vaccine injury is not rare, but it is rarely repented. How do you sleep at night knowing you could be responsible for even one of these deaths due to your vaccine mandates? Thank you.
Thank you. And that is our last speaker. Thank you. Then thank you all for listening, coming, participating. The next regular meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 26, 2022, at 5:00 PM. Thank you. This adjourns this meeting.